All right, um, with that, we're gonna go ahead and call a meeting to order. Mr. Blackhoff, you can call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden. Linda Grassi.
Yeah.
Tom Heck.
Here.
Lori Korniski.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
All right, and with that, let's go ahead and do the punch. You do our flag, Gary?
We can't because the sharing is disabled, so we'll have to go without the flag.
Okay. I pledge allegiance-
I have a flag on my lapel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all staff, students, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone, this is the meeting of the Board of Education, held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section of the agenda. Can everybody hear? All board members can hear everything, all administrators, everybody needs to be. Please be sure to speak immediately if you cannot hear or see anyone or someone during the meeting. Governor Dewine signed amended substitute House Bill 197 into law. This new law is a response to the health risks associated with the coronavirus outbreak. Among other things, this new law allows public bodies such as boards of education to conduct their meetings using telephone conference, video conference, or other similar technologies. This law became effective on March 27th, 2020. Riverside Board of Education is committed to the health, safety, and welfare of our students and their parents, our staff, and our community in general. But even at these times, the board needs to take certain actions to keep the district operational now and fully functional in the future. For these reasons, the board will forego an in-person meeting tonight to avoid a gathering of our community members. We'll conduct this meeting by video conference and will livestream this video conference meeting to the public in accordance with this new law. If a member of the public wishes to submit a comment or question for consideration as part of the public participation section of this meeting, please use either the raise hand function or chat feature in Zoom. We ask all public viewers to disable their camera and mute their microphone during the meeting except for the designated public participation section on the agenda. The Board of Education will suspend portions of certain bylaws which are not consistent with amended House Bill, substitute House Bill 197. This will ensure compliance with the amended substitute House Bill 197. At a later date, the Board of Education will decide whether any of its future meetings will occur via Zoom or other means based on information available at the time. Thank you for your time, consideration, and patience during this difficult time, and thank you to our entire administrative, teaching, and non-teaching staff for all their hard work during this difficult time. I'm gonna make a motion to suspend certain bylaws on recommendation of the superintendent of schools in light of provisions set forth in amended substitute House Bill 197, signed by Governor Mike Dewine on March 27th, 2020, permitting electronic meetings of public bodies in Ohio. Riverside Local School District Board of Education hereby suspends the operation of bylaws 0100s, definition of voting, and bylaws 0166 and 0167, to the extent that they require a board member's physical presence at a meeting to vote, and bylaws 0162, to the extent that it requires physical presence for the purpose of a forum. He determines that the suspension shall take effect immediately to cover the entirety of this meeting from commencement to adjournment, action taking in this resolution, and all action taken during the meeting prior to the passage of this resolution. C finds there are compelling reasons to adopt the suspension, and D directs that all other portions of bylaws 0100, 0162, 0166, and 0167 shall remain in full force and effect. If I can have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Grassi. Is there any discussion on any of that? If not, call the roll, please.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 28th, 2020 Board Minutes. If I can have a second, please?
One second.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Is there any discussion? If there is, I'll call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried, and that takes us to special reports.
We do not have any special reports today.
Okay, all business. Okay, how about new business?
So, Mr. Kalas, I just have a question. I know there's been some conversation about what the, you know, the fall might look like, and I just wondering if you could put in a nutshell some of the things that might be in the hopper that would be of interest to certainly me as a board member, perhaps other board members, as well as some of the people listening in.
I actually have a few topics that I'd like to talk about during my presentation that I think aligns with what you're asking.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, if there's anything else, it will take us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. First up is the Superintendent's Business Advisory. Without having seen, we should have had our last meeting during the senior project fair, which obviously that is not unfortunately able to happen, so I will be looking for us to have a meeting once the new school year gets underway. That takes us on to curriculum programming and boosters.
Okay, boosters, we haven't had a meeting due to the situation that we're at hand. Curriculum meeting on May 12th at 8:00 a.m. We talked a little bit about what we might see for 2021 school year. Again, there's gonna be quite a few talks about that and whatever the situation allows us to do at that time. We are moving forward with regards to like kindergarten registrations and things like that, so that part of the old business is going on. For the ending of the 1920 school year, we talked a little bit about teacher PD that's gonna be taking place from June 2nd to June 4th, finalizing some activities like the clapout and graduation, and I take it, Jim, you'll probably be talking about those two things?
I will.
Okay, and then we discussed also a parent survey that was given out. We got over 1,023 responses back discussing all kinds of things, and I think we're getting a summary of that on the website also. And parents had a chance to give their opinions on things like assignments, grades, social emotional type things, and special ed, so a lot of good feedback there, and we like the response total that we got. We like to continue to grow that. We also talked about the upcoming welding lab, and we're moving ahead with that. TDA is going to, could be finalizing everything for bid, and we talked a little bit about special ed and some reductions in force going on in that department, and I think that's it. Tom, anything else?
No, Jack, I think you covered it all. Thank you.
Okay, Melissa, you good? I don't know where she went. Okay.
Yeah, my internet is wonky, so I have my video turned off. No, Jack, that was a good summary of everything that we talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for-
Sorry?
That's it for my stuff.
Thank you. That takes us then to finance and audit personnel legislative. Mrs. Grassi?
We had a finance meeting on the morning of May 19th, which was last week, when we talked about the five-year forecast, among other things, most notably being the personnel evaluations that have been completed using a little bit of a different protocol. Other than that, like I said, we have the five-year forecast. I'm gonna allow Gary to speak to that. We talked about some different scenarios and what things will look different if we have some things that come up over the summer that we don't have information on at the moment. So he will cover that, so that's all for the Finance and Personnel Committee. Some of the things that are going on legislatively, that there has been a moratorium and a bill that's been approved that extends storm shelters for construction, new school construction progress projects to November 30th of 2022. So I'm not exactly sure if that has to go through any other voting right now, but that passed, the Senate passed that. It's Senate Bill 248. So I'm not exactly sure. Couple of conflicting bills running through right now, both the House and the Senate regarding improperly passing a stop school bus and using school bus cameras to service evidence and the dollar amounts of fines that can be levied upon people for that. There was some talk about the CAUV, which is the agricultural use value for folks that need to reapply for that program each year. That is going through committee. And then there was another amount of $5 million, which was being requested to help fund ESSs to assist in the hiring of social workers and mental and behavioral health professionals. And so we're just following that as well. And the thing on the agenda right now is the reopening of K-12 schools. OSBA provided some testimony. I don't know if anybody had an opportunity to check that link out and read the actual testimony that they have provided. It's a couple of pages long, and they just had some things to say about like trying to get that information and get that information out soon, sooner rather than later, so the districts can plan appropriately. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Billings and grounds, operations, alumni, Mr. Black-
Sure, so the easiest one up front, there was no Alumni Association meeting. I may have mentioned this last time, but there was a donation from the Alumni Association to Riverside to help pay for some of the senior signs for graduation. So they, you know, they certainly want to be remembered at this time of, you know, the coronavirus crisis, if there's a lack of a better term. We did, so we definitely want to thank them for that donation and for their thoughtfulness. With regard to Billings and Grounds, we did meet on the 21st, which was last Thursday. You know, there isn't a, you know, it wasn't, there's not a whole lot to report. We are looking to replace a boiler at Lammouth, and so we're starting the bid process for that. And once we get that number, we'll definitely discuss it again at the Billings and Grounds Committee and then move it forward to the full board for consideration. They're gonna do some patching of the parking lots, particularly at Lammouth, but, and all the buildings are gonna get some attention, but there's also gonna be some work done with the storm drains at Buckeye and Riverside at the campus. And we are still working the punch lists for the new buildings. We are coming up on the time when we will take full possession of them. Right now, just for people's memory, we are kind of under a warranty period. So as we identify things that need to be done, there's a punch list that's been worked down, and and we are managing that to make sure that when we are in, you know, when it comes time for the transition, that all the things that the Icon, the instruction manager at risk is, has accomplished all the things that they're responsible for. So one thing that came out today, I saw there was an email. There are issues. Many of you, certainly if you have children at the new elementary schools, you've probably noticed the cement issue, the concrete issue, particularly at Parkview or Sidney Parkside. And there was some analysis that came back on some core samplings, and I'm surprised by the results. And so I will be moving forward to have a Billings and Grounds meeting next week so that we can discuss. Excuse me, sorry for- Anyway, that is it unless there are any questions.
No, thank you. All right, that takes us on to the Policy Committee and Strategic Plan Liaison. Mrs. Korniski?
We have not had a Policy Committee meeting or a Strategic Plan meeting since the last board meeting, so there's no update.
I missed a lot of that. Did you say there was no update?
Yeah, no update. We have not had a meeting since the last board meeting.
Thank you. All right, that takes us on, Dr. Kalas, to the Superintendent's Report.
Okay, as everyone knows, there have been additional orders that have been made by the Governor's Office and the Ohio Department of Health. Not a lot of it includes any guidance on transportation. However, I was able to get some information. It's been discussed at the ODE, and from what I gather, this is not anything that is set in stone, but it's something that they're talking about at the state level, about how districts are going to be expected to provide transportation to students come fall if things change with the health crisis. So what I understand, what I'm hearing, is that even with buses of 72, when I say 72, that means that it's three students per bench. There's 24 benches in a bus, and if you multiply it by three, you get 72. Rarely do we have that many students on a bus because only small, real small kids can go three to a seat. You know, what's, what we typically have is two to a seat, and that would be 48, obviously, if you take 24 and multiply it by two. Anyway, what they're looking at is putting one student per bench on a bus, which would mean be that the capacity would be 24 students. Now that's a little bit better than what I heard before. Before, I heard it was gonna be every other bench that they would put them on for about 12 kids. So you can imagine that this is gonna be very difficult to transport students with 24 to a seat. The exception is that if there are members of the same household, there's more than one can sit on that bench. So if you have siblings that are picked up at the same time, they can sit together. I pulled all AM routes to gauge how many students ride buses in our district, and I pulled one typical AM bus route with 56 students, nine stops. By using what I'm hearing from the Ohio Department of Education, that we would be at 24 student capacity after the fifth stop. So we don't have, we cannot run our transportation department in a way, in manner that we have in the past if we have these regulations. I mean, there's other things we've been talking about too, is, you know, what are the other options? One would be to start, you know, stagger school times and try to increase the number of tiers that we run, possibly reduce service at the secondary level and put our resources at the primary middle, or simply buy buses and hire drivers, which is pretty impractical considering that we would have to probably close to double our capacity. And we have difficulty as well as other districts in the whole area in hiring bus drivers. Other, other things that I've been hearing about is that they would also recommend that we take temperatures of kids getting on the bus. It's not a requirement, but it's, they strongly encourage it and consider it. This just doesn't make any sense to me because I believe it would be a huge liability that if you are taking the temperature of a child getting on the bus, and if they are over the benchmark of temperature, what are you to do? Are you keeping them from getting on the bus? Do you go to the next stop and let that child try to walk back home? I don't understand how they would expect us to do that in a manner that's going to be safe for the child. Also, some of the other things they're talking about is that having drivers and students wear masks on the bus, also applying ant sanitizer when they're boarding the bus. They would board the bus also where kids would get on and they would go to the back of the bus, and we would slowly fill the bus from back to front. And then when we arrive at the, at the school to unload, it would be front to back. That makes sense. But when you're departing the school to take students home, you'd have to get the students, we have the longer bus route to get on the bus first. You know, the longer bus route for those kids would be the ones who sit in the back, and then you would fill the bus in the front. You'd have to sanitize each seat with high-touch surfaces in between bus routes as well, which makes sense too. There was also some consideration, like I said, between having nine and 14 kids on a bus. That doesn't look like it's gonna be the case, but they also mentioned having bus drivers wear face shields and having shower curtains on the bus as well. From what I understand, the Ohio Highway Patrol already said that they're not gonna permit that because they believe it's a danger with the face mask, that it might fog up. Bus drivers won't be able to drive with face masks on, and they can't see to the rear of the bus where there's shower curtains hanging there as well. That is, that is transportation right now. Again, none of this is-
Jim, can I ask a question on public transportation? Because I see that Coach Bores on here too. Obviously, if that's what we're looking at, you know, I know in my experience, you know, we pack those buses when we're going to sporting events, right? The cheerleaders are on there, the football players, basketball, whatever. I mean, are we gonna be looking at then increased potentially paid participation fees? I mean, is it gonna significantly increase each team's cost just to travel?
It is something we should consider. I haven't looked at it close enough to know what it's gonna cost, but understand that even with sports, what is even more concerning is the lack of resources, the lack of drivers that we have. At the end of the school day, sometimes buses are delayed because we don't have the driver back yet from another route. So now if we have to increase that number of buses to go to an athletic event or or some type of other event that our students are involved with, we're gonna be late, and it's gonna be a problem. That is just one area. We're looking also at cafeterias. From what I've been reading is you have students sitting in every other seat facing the same direction. Now, the capacity at Riverside, at the Riverside Campus Cafeteria, the main cafeteria and also that auxiliary room that we have, has a capacity of about 320. Roughly speaking, if we put everyone at every other seat facing in one direction, the capacity would be 86 students. We also looked at JRW's cafeteria as well. Capacity is 292. Again, under the same conditions where we have them every other seat facing in the same direction, we can seat about 93 students. So it's gonna be an issue. With that being said too, I did ask Michelle Gifford to be in on our board meeting today, and she's gonna give a real quick update on her department, and then we're gonna go through some athletics and also latchkey and what we're doing and how we're responding to some of these restrictions. Michelle, you got a couple minutes if you can give us a quick update?
Okay. I just wanted to update the numbers of the students we've been feeding at the, it's three buildings because we do service Fairport Harpers lunch program, so we are serving lunch out of Harding High School as well. But out of Buckeye and Riverview alone, we're already at about 10,000 meals for the month of May. That's breakfast and lunch. Buckeye has really jumped in numbers. The first week, they had about 115, 120, and they've been averaging 200, 210. So 210 students, they get three breakfast, three lunch. It's a lot of meals those ladies are preparing. So I'm looking for May to outdo April. For April, I think our total meals for each school were about 3,000, and Buckeye is already at 4,300. So they're good numbers, and I have a staff set up for summer. We can serve all the way through August 31st. Obviously, school will be starting in that timeframe, we hope, but we're gonna serve meals all summer along at those three buildings, which should keep revenue flowing in.
Hey, Michelle, that is yourself like super impressive and so awesome what you guys are doing. Could you potentially send that information to Nick so that we have that, that's something that we could? I think that's something that's really important that we should be putting out there to the community, how much you guys have actually done and how much service we're giving towards we by doing that. I would like to see us be able to, you know, really promote what you guys have done because it's really amazing.
Sure, thank you. Do you want me to send him numbers of how many meals we're doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Michelle, are we doing well financially on that? I know USDA is picking up the tab for all of that.
So Gary and I have chatted a little bit about the status of my fund, and I believe I was potentially going to break even at the end of the school year. So with hiring the staff for summer, the number of meals that we're serving, I'm hoping that I will continue to be in the black or very close, because this is revenue we've never tapped before. So, you know, it's, I don't know what it's gonna look like, but if it's bringing in $50,000 in June and July and August that we never had, you know, that's good money.
We certainly don't lose money on it though, right? Because I mean, by the time they're paying for what we do, like, it's paying our costs.
I would hope. I mean, we're losing some because on a, on a regular day in session, we're serving thousands of meals. You know, we serve probably 600 on campus actual meals, and then 150 to 220 at all the elementary schools. So I'm not doing those numbers, obviously, you know, for the people that are coming to pick them up, but I also don't have a lot of other costs. You know, I'm not buying as much food, you know, as much milk, those kinds of things.
I know, I think you're doing a, you guys are doing a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. We have additional restrictions as it relates to groups and using the athletic facilities too. The Director's Orders came out last week where there's guidance on baseball, softball, batting cages, golf courses, nature golf, local and public pools and aquatic centers, tennis facilities, training for all sports and general non-contact sports, including bowling alleys, like I said, with some exceptions. Now, we don't have to worry about all of this because we don't have a pool, nor do we have a bowling alley. But in terms of pool, we do have latchkey, and latchkey in any given year, they go on a lot of different types of field trips, and they go to the pool pretty often as well. I will get to latchkey in just a minute, but I wanted to touch base on some of the restrictions coming out from the state concerning athletic facilities, because even though the school year is almost over, we do have a lot of youth groups that use our facilities throughout the summer and also in the, into the fall. And again, some of these restrictions are, are gonna be, I think, problematic for some of the groups. But in terms of baseball, you have to have a six-foot physical distance while in the facility. You must conduct daily symptoms assessment by coaches and the players. It's a self-evaluation. There's to be no team coolers or shared drinking stations. They have compliant game balls where sides of the athletics, they use their own ball. They have, prior to competitive tournaments, event owners must alert the local health department of the event. Well, we're the owner of the facility, but we may not be using it. It might be the sport, so we have to get some clarification that our youth, non-school-sponsored baseball teams use our facility. Who is responsible for letting the local health department know of the event? Here it says the owners. The board's the owner of the property, but you're not using it. Requirements must be shared prior to an event. They can't just share them while they, while they arrive. Lineups need to be entered online or spoken, or by spoken word. That's a strong recommendation. Athletes travel to the venue alone. I don't think too many 12-year-olds are gonna be driving their own car, so they're gonna have to go with their parents, with their immediate household. There's other things that are involved too, depending on what group you are. If you're an athlete, if you're the athlete, if you're the umpire, there are a couple other things. For the baseball athlete, you can't share equipment either. Now, I've been involved with youth sports, and I know kids share bats. You have a catcher that catches maybe a couple of innings, and then another kid, you know, catches, then another kid uses a batting helmet, and all those things need to stop. You can't have any type of, of sharing of equipment. No sharing of water, no, no water equipment, like large jugs or anything else. You're not allowed to high-five. They're not allowed to shake their, the opponent's hand afterwards. You're supposed to tip their caps. So there's a lot of other things going on. Also with spectators, there are a lot of expectations for spectators as well. Now, I've asked Dave Bores, our Athletic Director, to come too, to speak to how we're gonna handle the use of our facilities because as of, as of May 26th, we can- going to handle the use of our facilities because as of May 26th, we can have our student athletes come in and use the weight room if they wanted to, but there are some restrictions. We've been working on this for the past few days. There was some discussion about holding off till opening it till June 8th, almost as a conference-wide date. And I said after so many months of being in quarantine here, that I don't want to wait an extra week if we don't have to. So Dave has been working real hard to see what we can do to open it up by June 1st. And if our athletes want to use it, we'll be very careful in making sure that they follow the restrictions and they can get back on track. Dave?
Yeah. Hey, good evening, everybody. Can everyone hear me?
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks. I'm calling for audio, just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Okay, thanks, Jim. Yeah, I'm not going to get into every single little guideline, but I'm trying to give you hopefully a vision of what we have pictured, knowing that it's constantly evolving. I mean, it's evolving from yesterday to today, depending on who we talk to and collaborate with, in addition to what the Ohio Health and Athletic Association hands out and then obviously the governor's office. So we take all this information and data. Pete, Jim, myself, Dan Weiner enlisted the help of Michael Patterson, our Lake Health certified contracted athletic trainer, to get his guidelines because he's in the front line of it right now and he's not working with the school districts. He's at the urgent cares, in the hospitals, he's doing all that stuff. So working with him to kind of get things situated. So here's kind of what we're looking at today and knowing that the rest of the week will evolve and we'll kind of get things settled and make them more concrete. The Ohio Department of Health and the governor's office handed out their restart guidelines for all sports. It was a skill training philosophy. They handed out, you know, some decently specific guidelines. And then the Ohio High School Athletic Association piggybacked on those and handed out their guidelines that are only recommendations. They stress they want to make sure that the local districts have the final say because the local districts know with their clientele and their stakeholders and everything about their district, what it entails. So, and obviously working with the county health board, which I had a phone call into them today, not able to make contact, so that'll be another phone call I'll be making tomorrow and following up with. But what it's going to look like, first and foremost, social distancing of six feet or greater is number one. The governor and the state is not putting an actual number on what that looks like in terms of people. The Ohio High School Athletic Association is recommending 10 or less, including the coach. They're using the same pods where, let's say if we use the stadium, a group of 10 or less could be in one corner, another corner, another corner, another corner. So you can conceivably see 40, 50 student athletes and coaches in a stadium at one time conducting drill skill sessions without necessarily doing anything wrong. So now the weight room, let's say for example, or the Field House or the Riverside Gymnasium, those spaces are obviously smaller. So that would have to be dealt with accordingly as we go through. And that's something that, you know, Michael Patterson, our trainer and I, would be doing here the next few days, be walking the campus facility, taking measurements and seeing what realistically we can do within those guidelines and parameters. We're talking about having a pre-screening checklist for all athletes when they come in. We're looking at obtaining a few touchless thermometer guns where all you have to do is point it, no contact thing, point it to the forehead and it gives you an instant reading. We're going to track all that data, not only to make sure that everybody's in compliance, we're also going to track what groups each kid is with and coached. So if heaven forbid that is an outbreak and there is a diagnosed case of COVID-19, we can now confine those groups that were part of that. So it's not going to be necessarily a whole, a whole team, a whole day of people being in there, but at least we'll start with the group that was there. Talking about propping doors open, one way in, another way out. So there's no cross-contamination between people coming and going. We've talked, Dan Weiner and I in our meeting today, we're going to, he's going to, I'm not going to, but he and his staff and crew, they're going to start putting up hand foam sanitizing dispensers everywhere. We're going to have a bunch of them, we're going to have from Field House out near stadium to the weight rooms on down the line. So that's going to be access. We're going to saturate those places with the squirt bottles filled with the antibacterial solution that kills the COVID-19 with paper towels. We're going to have an abundance of garbage cans without lids and nobody has to take the lid, close it and open it, but it's a lidless garbage can where just after you're done wiping things down, that'll be taken care of. A custodial crew every night will go through and kind of once over everything, specifically the handles and the switches and everything else. Each program that uses the facilities will be responsible. I'm in the process of putting together what our requirements are for our coaches, athletes, spectators, all that stuff. They'll be responsible for sanitizing as they go and then when they're done. So it's not going to be we have to wait for custodians. It's everybody that's using it is going to have those guidelines of how we're going to treat our facilities and what the expectations are to make sure that things are sanitized appropriately and before the next group comes in. We're going to stagger start times. So it's not going to be an eight to nine and a nine to 10 because we want to make sure no groups are crossing. So maybe a first workout's eight to 8:50, the next one's, you know, nine to 9:55, so on and so forth. So that's another way that we're looking at. We have an athletic director, we've been meeting as athletic directors for the seven counties essentially northeast Ohio, weekly and sometimes a couple of times a week. We have another one on Thursday. There's been, I think, two schools that tried to open today. From what I understand, so far, so good. So we're looking forward to seeing some of the recommendations, suggestions that they've got after having a couple of days under their belts and things that they've done. Other districts are looking at June 1st, some are looking at June 8th, like Jim said, where it just depends on what each school district is comfortable with. But when these came out late last week, Jim and I immediately communicated and like Harry told me, he wanted to see if we can go June 1st and I agreed. We figured this week to get all the ducks in row and take care of stuff could be sufficient to do that. So that's, that's just kind of nuts, just stuff off the top of my head, just some notes. I mean, I'll open it up, things that I've been looking at the data for so long now that I'm assuming you guys know stuff that's already just in my head. So please, anything that, you know, questions about our thoughts, that right now, Tuesday at 7:39 is kind of where we're at.
So when you're looking at, you're talking about coaches having to take temperatures and things like that, are we looking at having to like mass purchase all those kind of digital, you know, like infrared thermometers and get those to every, you know, to every single coach? Because we're certainly, you know, the coaches are all kind of all over the place physically, right? You've got them at Loom, then at Riverside, and you know, is that a shared thing? Is like, or what are the thoughts on those kind of things? Like are we, how are we budgeting for those kind of new expenses too, Gary?
From what I understand.
Dave, somebody talking?
Yeah, I was.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, Bill, I was talking to Michael Patterson today, and he came up and he's got through the group discount and he does a great job of making sure that we can get the best prices on all of our, you know, equipment and stuff that he needs for a trainer. So he was today, he's talking to his boss after we talked, we talked to him about 1:00 this afternoon, and he was going to go back and start giving me a price point for things we're looking at, including his recommendations. He was going to talk to the other athletic trainers in the county. He was going to talk to, like I say, his bosses and see what they thought we should do and how we should go about it. He also is going to be here starting June 1st. So we will have his assistance in helping screen and whatnot. I know he will have some of that equipment already as a part of what he brings to the table for us. So Jen, I don't have an exact answer yet, but we're getting that hopefully very soon.
If it's something different than what's in the recent orders, then that's something we need to talk about because the recent orders say must conduct daily symptom assessments by coaches and players, self-evaluation. Anyone experienced symptoms including cough, shortness of breath or difficulty breathing, fever, chills, repeated shaking with chills, muscle pain, headaches, sore throat, and new loss of taste or smell must stay home. Doesn't say anything about, you know, using a temperature gun to.
Well, the reason I was asking too, you know, is that we know it's one thing at the Riverside Campus, it's, then Loom is like kind of just a whole different island off there on its own. You know, at the campus, it seems like you guys can probably, you've got the trainer there can maintain that little consistency a little better than we probably have over at Loom.
No, and that's fair. And that's what that we need to discuss and figure out. And, you know, the next thing too is in the next probably 36 hours, like we do with all our sharing of facilities, just figuring out from each coach and each program what they're looking to do this summer. You know, so we have the summer skills versus what we have come August 1st, when season's actually started. So yeah, so we'll figure out, and that's something I'll be able to collaborate with Michael Patterson as like, okay, here's what we're looking at. Here's the teams that want to be in at this time. Here's what we can fit here. Here's the ones going on at Loom, what they're planning on doing. And what does that look like? So yes.
So I have a question. Who, is there anybody who is going to be assisting us with the purchase of hand sanitizer and disinfecting solutions? That's, it's expensive, it's hard to come by right now, and districts all over are going to be, I mean, we're going to be going through this stuff in mass quantities.
We, we're working with the Western Reserve ESC right now. They're trying to get us some pricing and I haven't heard back from them yet. We've been receiving a lot of mails on companies that are peddling, you know, the PPE type equipment. So at this point, we're going to wait to see what the ESC provides us, and I would like to go through the ESC if indeed it's the most, get the most bang for your buck because all the districts are going to be pulling their resources to buy from the same vendor, I believe.
So what time, when do we anticipate opening for stuff?
June 1st.
Right. So that's next week. There, I mean, if we haven't placed orders for this stuff yet.
Yeah, we still have some now, we still have, we don't, we're not out of all of it. We still have some.
Because you can't have these kids coming on without, without.
Thank you, Michelle.
That available. I'm just concerned we won't have enough.
Well, my other question with that too, Dave, is, you know, with, I know that, you know, we get all these notifications as parents and coaches of physicals that are expiring. So how are we collecting that to make sure that our athletes, if they're coming in, have their appropriate physicals on file? You know, are we having them nail the men? Are we going to have the coaches watching who's coming in and all that? I mean.
No, and that's a good question. And usually what happens, Jen, is through the off-season stuff, as the season's not going, the physicals don't normally, aren't really tracked as much during this off-season time. It's more so cannot participate day one, come August 1st, or whenever that season starts. So as of right now, there's no specific guidance or guidelines from OHSAA on those.
Obviously, the restrictions are also going to have an impact on our summer camp plans through latch key. There's a lot of discussion on whether or not we were even going to have latch key. Today, I would like to, I would like to have Julie Bialko talk a little bit about what we're doing in handling some of the restrictions and how it's going to impact the program. It's not going to be the same type of program that we have offered in previous years. So we would still like to provide it for our parents. Right now, I believe we're down by about 20 students or so than where we would be at this particular time. I do not know if that number is going to increase. I anticipate it will if we provide the camp and let the parents know exactly what we're doing to keep their kids safe, other than having one camp supervisor to nine kids or some other things that we're doing as well. Again, I asked Mrs. Bialko here to give you a quick update.
Hello, everyone. I did submit my plan for summer camp along with the Responsible Restart Ohio guidelines from Governor Dewine. I submitted that to Rob Graham, the Lake County Health Commissioner, and he took a look at it over the weekend and he made some minor adjustments, but he has approved my plan that I submitted to him to conduct camp for the kids. Of course, it won't be like I normally do with field trips and that sort of thing, but for the parents that need childcare, I think we could have something for them. I would like to move the program to Riverview instead of Buckeye. It gives me extra space for the kids to have nine kids to a room. So it's nine kids, one counselor. I cannot mix the kids together so they will stay kind of like, that's how we do when we go out, like go out to the zoo or anything. We're working down into smaller groups anyway, so it can be like that all day long. We'll have the same counselor to work with all day. I put it, I put into place where the kids could have their own art boxes so they have everything they want to do, you know, coloring, pencils, markers, crayons, that is theirs personally in a shoebox type thing. It's theirs for the entire time that they're at camp and they could take it home with them when camp is over. Same with Legos and that sort of thing. I can sanitize Legos. They'll have their own box, they could use it, and we could sanitize those at the end of each day. I purchased already because I, if I don't use it for summer camp, I'll use it somewhere down the road for latch key, the thermometer to scan their foreheads. So Governor Dewine's, one of his guidelines is that you have curbside drop-off. So we can have the parents drive up to the curb and we will greet them outside. We will take their temperature. If they have a temperature of 100 degrees or higher, we ask that they go home. And then we will walk their student into the building, into their respective classroom for the day. We could use the cafeteria, we can use the gym over at Riverview, and we also have the playground that the kids can go out and play in their own groups. I will not intermix the groups together. And then I, in my plan, I just said, we will clean frequently touched areas, doorknobs, handles, to the bathroom and that sort of thing.
Julie, one quick question that I didn't ask you when we were talking about a lot of this. Will parents at least have some ability to, if there's friends, to be in the same group?
Yes. Friends and siblings, they, yeah. We can, we can manage all of that as soon as we know who's coming and, you know, the drop-off times, we could stagger them so you're not all coming in at the same time. But I will have counselors in all the rooms waiting for the kids to come in.
At which point, at this, at this point, we're also canceling all the field trips. We're going to play it by ear in terms of later on in the summer, if we can go on some of those, we'll revisit it, correct?
Yes, yes. And food service, a bonus to the summer campers this year would be food service can provide the meals that they're providing to the other students. They can provide breakfast and lunch to latch key students as well. So that's a big plus for some, a lot of families.
Good.
And I also would like to reduce the cost a little bit to the families just because we're not going to be taking all the trips, especially in the beginning. I would like to reduce it by $25, so make it $120 per week for the families.
Is that okay with the board? Okay.
Yep.
All right. So we're going to go ahead. You're going to start on June 8th, correct?
We're set to start on June 8th, yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
Is that when we would have been starting?
Yes, yes.
Any questions for Julie? Thank you.
That was great work.
Thank you for everything you do with the kids.
Thank you very much. It's going to be different this year, but we'll.
That you're still doing that thing here.
I'm sorry the presentation is long. There's two, a couple of other items. One is the fifth grade clamp out is scheduled for May 29th. The parade will begin at the elementary buildings with the exception of Parkside, which will start at Riverside for routing purposes. Each parade will consist of a lead bus, 10 to 15 cars and an end bus. Future participation will be voluntary. The decorated cars and buses will travel the routes of where our fifth grade students travel to get to school. Donna from Transportation Department has been really helpful and she created the routes, including estimated times, which will be shared with the parade participants. Students will need to go to their designated bus stops to see the parade as the buses will not be able to navigate through every neighborhood and down every single street. Instruction for parents will include information about parade as well as safe social distancing practices at the stops.
What time is it going to start?
Um, I don't have that. I will, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
10:00 AM.
Yeah, we're starting at 10 o'clock. Yeah, sorry, 10 o'clock.
10 AM. All right. Also, in May of a typical school year, the Riverside Campus hosts the incoming eighth graders during a portion of the day so they can get a feel of what it's like at the campus, like a normal day at the campus. The incoming eighth graders are given a tour of the building and an opportunity to interact with a panel of current Riverside Campus students. This is part of our phase in process to help our new students get acclimated to their new building and is followed up with a day in August before the first day of school where the incoming eighth graders are given the opportunity to walk their schedule and attend a brief presentation by administration and our school guidance department. With the current school shutdown situation, we still felt strongly about keeping this part of the program for our incoming eighth graders. Mrs. Wakum and Mrs. Falvey, Assistant Principal and Guidance Counselor, organized a six separate Zoom orientation session. organized a six separate Zoom orientation sessions and met with the incoming eighth graders during their designated science class time at Lammuth. Mr. Leatzos and Mrs. Wakum addressed and welcomed the students. A student panel of current Riverside campus students were present to answer questions. Um, Mrs. Valvi served as the moderator and additional items, uh, shared with the incoming eighth graders included RHS Campus Highlight Video, a flip grid, which was advice to eighth graders, um, and also a flip grid for advice for the class of, uh, 2025. Um, they did a really nice job, uh, with that. And, um, one more thing I would like to mention is, um, the effort by our, um, advisor, Jamie McIntyre at the high school, who has been doing a lot of work, uh, to make graduation something for our students to remember. Um, she was able to pass out the caps and gowns on the 13th and 14th, I mean, the 14th and 15th without too much of a problem. And she's been, uh, handling all the logistics that are involved with the commencement, uh, that we're planning for June 13th and 14th. I just wanted to give a shout out to her for all the work that she's done. Our district is so fortunate to have her and likes of, um, Stacy Lucas, uh, working so hard for our students. Um, they're great to have, uh, here as, uh, serving our students.
I would agree.
They're amazing.
They are. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much.
Hey, I have one question.
Sorry.
I have one question.
Yes.
When, if we do latch key at Riverview, um, any of the maintenance that's going to be done, will they be?
The punches? No, Dan already talked with Chris from, um, Icon and he, he won't be in any of the classrooms. And anything that he needs to do, he won't be in our way.
Okay.
We took care of that last week.
I just wanted you to be aware.
Okay, I'm aware. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Then Mr. Flacco, you are up.
Okay, I have, uh, several updates for the board. Uh, and then at the end we'll go through the five-year forecast since it's, uh, since it's the May update time. Uh, first update I have is I received correspondence from Andy Rose, which is the Concord Township Administrator. Uh, just some residents had some concerns about the trees on the property along the north property line. Uh, that they're a little bit short. Some of them are a little bit shorter than what the settlement said. Uh, so there's about seven trees that are a little short and a few that are dead. Uh, I sent those off to Icon, uh, so they can take a look and, um, see if they can get that remedied. As, you know, part of the bid package was to have seven, eight foot trees along that line. A few of them seem to be a little short. So he's looking into that and seeing what they can do in that aspect. Um, in regards to the head and property, uh, the property in the back, working on closing, uh, on the transaction to township. The zoning, uh, has gone into effect, the rezoning. And now we just need to get some documents signed, which, you know, is a little more challenging that we're all working from home. But, uh, Mrs. Harden and I are going to be working on that the next couple of days. Uh, get a few things signed and file the recorder's office. Uh, for the front portion, uh, we're looking to a possible lease or lease to purchase option. Uh, but that's, that's our initial talks on that. Uh, just, you know, so the building is not seen, they're vacant and to partner up with other organizations. Um, since our last meeting, uh, actually our last meeting was on the final day of the election, the primary election. And we had the passage of the Lake County School Financing District. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen here and to show a few of the results from that, uh, just to show how it, uh, varied from, from last, uh, November. I'm going to share this here. Are you able to see the spreadsheet?
Yes.
Okay. The left columns is, is just a breakout of all the precincts from the Lake County School Financing District. It includes the Riverside School District along with Painesville, Madison and Perry. There's a lot of detail that doesn't often on the screen. But F kind of shows the difference between the yes and no votes. Um, in past in many of the precincts, except for Concord B, Leroy Township A and B, Assam Township F and G, NBA, Painesville Township C, K. So the most precincts that passed, as a summary, let me scroll over to a little bit here. And these columns here shows it by community and you can see that it passed in every community except for Leroy. Uh, overall is well-supported with 58.24% passage rate. Which is, you know, good for us that that's, that's been renewed. It's been renewed for 30 years. Uh, I wanted to just kind of compare what that looked like from November. Remember in November, the levy did not pass by 30 votes. And, uh, let's see, it's a little bit smaller. Hope you can see it side by side. There we go. And you can see comparing the yes, no's from this, this election to November. You can see some, some major swings, uh, especially in Concord Township where it passed by 413, where in November it failed by 411. Um, Leroy, it passed, well, it's, it's, even though it failed in Leroy, it's, it's still came out much better. Uh, Madison Township also had a, a pretty big swing and also in Perry Township. And also the, the very small portion of, uh, Geogee County that, that levy falls into. So I think, you know, we did a much better job communicating. Uh, it was obviously a unique collection with the circumstances. Uh, but now the, the levy will continue to be in effect through, uh, calendar year 2025. So that will, that, that was a big change that, that affects our five-year forecast. Um, next thing I wanted to talk about, also, um, we're getting bidding through the House Schools Council for, for this year's bus purchase. As, as we've been, you know, working through our replacement cycle of five buses a year. Uh, we're planning on doing another purchase of five that will probably be on the June 30th agenda. Uh, we do have a school bus purchasing grant to the State of Ohio of about $18,000. So that would be about one-fifth of a bus that that will support. Uh, those funds have not been cut yet. The possibility those funds could be cut. But, uh, we did apply for the grant, which we had to do by May 20th. Um, so assuming that funding is still available after July 1st. And then hopefully we'll be able to use that towards one of the five buses that we purchase. Uh, state budget cuts, obviously that's a big topic to discuss. Um, Governor announced back in early May, a 3.7% cut to public education for the State of Ohio in the current biennium, the current fiscal year, which ends on June 30th. Uh, unfortunately it wasn't 3.7% across the board. It was much heavier, heavier weighted on districts of quote unquote more wealth. Basically those who have a higher property tax capacity, basically based on property tax valuations. Uh, it kind of correlated with the, uh, under the old state funding formula, there was a state share index that districts of higher property tax valuations had a lower state share index and that was used to develop these cuts. Basically the inverse of that. So the cuts were, were heavily weighted on districts like Riverside, Menter, Willby, Slay, Mayfield, Beachwoods, Orange, districts like those where we're seeing the, the hardest hit. Uh, so our, our budget cut is actually 13.4% of our state revenue, which is $1,119,055 that being cut in this fiscal year. What they will do is they will recruit those funds from our state foundation payments. So we receive two payments a month from the state. So they will make that adjustment in those reports. Uh, the only issue is because our funding cut is so large that there is not enough funding left this fiscal year to recoup those funds. So it makes us go what they call insufficient. Uh, there's about 90 districts in the same situation as Riverside, where they're being cut by more than what's remaining in our payments for the fiscal year. Our cut is $264 a student based on ADM. ADM is a, is a way that, uh, is, is a enrollment measure that state uses, but also includes enrollment of students who attend charter schools as well. So that, that's counting our ADM. So our cut, you know, is more just the students we have sitting in our chairs. It also includes charter school students. Now they did cut charter school funding that gets deducted from our funding by $88.76. But that's fairly small compared to Riverside's $264 student cut. Um, what will happen is since we do not receive enough funding this, enough payments this, for the rest of this fiscal year, we have the option of A, cutting a check back to the State of Ohio by June 30th, or B, pulling it into fiscal year 2021 into our payments in that year. So that's, option B is the one I'm going with. I'd rather have the, uh, cash in the bank right now earning interest than to cut a check back to the state. Uh, also, we're a member of the Alliance for High Quality Education. They're working with Senator Dolan to try to get a fix in place, try to offset some of those cuts. So if by chance that does get, uh, makes it through the legislature and those funding cuts change, then if we already paid back the money, now we had to get the money back from the state. So I figure it might be easiest to just roll it into next year. So I kind of wanted to show, I'm going to share my screen again. What the state funding, uh, looks like as far as how they calculate this. And I'm sharing the wrong thing here. So from the Department of Education, we get a report on each payment that kind of breaks out the detail of what it looks like. And this screen here, this is May payment number one. So we get two of these a month. And you can see on line A here, our annual funding amount is $8,351,708.66. So what they do is they, you know, show what we've been paid to date. What's our balance prior to this payment and what our semi-monthly payment will be. So this is May number one before our cuts. So you can see our gross payment would be 347,000. Then they add some additional aid items such as preschool funding, special ed, transportation funding and student wellness funding and add these additional items to a total payment of 360,000. And they deduct items off of that, such as money that $6.50 a student that goes to the ESC. They add in open enrollment in, deduct out open enrollment out, community school transfer, STEM school transfer, scholarship transfer, some other things. And then so total of 90,000 deducted from our gross funding. Then they take out some more adjustments for excess cost tuition and other tuition items. Uh, college credit plus, so the, you know, the free courses that people take at Lakeland as our students. We do pay for those through deduction from our funding. Uh, so our total payment gets down to 214,000. Then they deduct, um, the employer portion of our retirement system, the state teacher retirement system and the school employee retirement system to a net payment of 56,000. So that was May number one. Now that they've updated for the state funding cuts, you can see our funding amount dropped to 7,232,000. So if you remember, that was, that kind of here, 8,351,000. We've already been overpaid at this point based on that. So then they do a negative, so our payment's negative 25,000. Then you add in our additional aid items, take us down to negative 100, negative 12,000. Then they deduct off all these other things. So another 84,000 is deducted off the negative 12,000. It's really funky math when you're looking at it. And by the time you go all down here, they add this new line in our funding, state insufficient funds, 151,000 to get our net payment down to zero. So basically our payments reduced to zero for May number two. And then June number one and June number two, we'll get nothing from the state. There's also, won't be funds available for the retirement system. So we'll have to cut a check to the retirement system. And basically we'll have a zero payment the next three, uh, next three payments. Um, essentially when July comes, we're still going to owe back 455,000 to the state for this current fiscal year. It's really a funky, funky math of how it works and how it shakes out. Um, it's just, it was a little surprising being this late in the fiscal year because, you know, my colleagues were, we, we knew cuts were coming. We'd never dreamt it would be this significant this late in, in the year. Um, and, you know, it's something we have to, have to work through. Uh, we will be receiving funds through the Federal Cares Act to help offset some of the, um, additional costs for going, doing online instruction. There's, uh, the caveats in there. We can use it for continuing operations and things like that. Uh, so we're working out, figuring out exactly how those funds will be utilized. Um, when we talk about the forecast here, you know, we, we know we're going to be finding hand sanitizer, cleaning supplies. You know, barriers, you know, plexiglass barriers, all that stuff. You know, how much is that really going to cost us? Uh, we don't know for sure at this point. Um, you know, do we need to increase custodial staff to have additional cleaning? Do we, you know, we're going to have to work through all those once we know what the, what the guidelines are, um, that we need to follow. Assuming that we're, we're back in session in the fall. And, you know, obviously there's, there's a lot to consider. And so when I get into the forecast here, um, you know, obviously there's, there's a lot of unknown. So I'm going to go ahead and give you one second here. I don't have my slides ready yet for the forecast. I did do a typical PowerPoint presentation. Um, here, let me just get this up here. All right. Is everyone able to see the slideshow?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So it's, it's, you know, we've, I follow the same format with the, uh, with the PowerPoint I typically do each, uh, May and November. Uh, so we'll go through some of it quickly, but we'll also focus on some of the key areas and, and, and what that looks like. Uh, so this first slide here, and this gets posted on the treasure webpage of, of, of the Riverside website to include the forecast, the assumptions and this presentation. So it can be referred back to. So there's a link here to some guidance from the Ohio Department of Education, kind of goes through the forecast line by line and what each of the items mean. And so some, just some general information. Uh, the first bullet points, probably the key one, the five-year forecast contains estimates based on the best information available at the time it's prepared. So if we went back to November and I would have told you that the last day of in-school instruction would have been in March, the Friday, the 13th in March, and that the state was going to cut 13.4% of our revenue by the end of the fiscal year. And we do remote instructions for the rest of the year. You probably told me I was crazy. Uh, so, you know, things do change. You know, we always try to predict what that is, but, you know, sometimes things come at us that obviously we, we didn't anticipate. Uh, so the forecast required to be updated and filed at the Ohio Department of Education in November and May of each year. Uh, there was some talk of possibly extending the, the May deadline. Uh, but, you know, are we going to know much more in June? As opposed to May, that's to be seen. Uh, forecast includes three previous years of actual data and five years of forecasted data, which includes the current fiscal year of 2020 through 2024. And the numbers of the forecast only tell a small part of the story that you had to read the assumptions to truly understand what goes in those numbers. And our forecast is unique because it includes the general fund and the Lake County School Financing District Fund. The federal funds required the financing district because it, we use it for instructional purposes for salaries for certain core subjects. We include that in our forecast. An executive overview, we're still solvent through fiscal year 2024. Uh, there are obviously many challenges and uncertainty due to COVID-19. Uh, we now projecting deficit spending next fiscal year. And that's because of the state budget cuts. That's where expenditures exceed our revenues. Uh, this current fiscal year included a new state biennium budget. Uh, but obviously if we had those different budget cuts that came into play here this month, uh, so, and there's more cuts to come. We'll talk about those later. And the Lake County School Financing District, we already discussed, was renewed in the Ohio primary election, which continues through calendar year 2025, which covers the first half of fiscal year 2026, which is two years beyond the five-year forecast at this point. Uh, we will see an increase in revenue. Uh, right now, you know, we're, because of the new allocation among the, the four districts, uh, each district will receive the funds that it generates. And, uh, so revenue for fiscal year 20 is at 2,053,000. Uh, it'll increase to 2.35 million next year and then 2.67 million the following year based on our estimates. Um, there's the, the executive overview, very, just a very abbreviated, uh, five-year forecast. You can see it. You can see in fiscal year 20, we started the year at $12.7 million cash balance. We expect revenues around 48.5 million with expenditures at 45.8 million, leaving a revenue surplus of 2.6 million, which increases our cash balance to 15, almost 15.4 million. We're projecting the end on June 30th. Fiscal year 2021, you know, starting the year at 15, almost 15.4 million. Revenues have gone down from last year because of the state funding cuts. It's like it's a 46.7 million is projecting right now. Expenditures increased in the 48.1 million. So we have a deficit spending of 1.3 million, lowering our cash balance, and we continue deficit spending through the life of the forecast. Obviously, there's a lot can change. So if, you know, things change dramatically before November, we'll definitely update the forecast there. We are going to be using a new forecasting model going forward. So, you know, we'll see how things shake out there. This chart here kind of shows revenues versus expenditures, revenues being in the blue, expenditures being in the red. So these first three years, 2017, 18, and 19 are actual data. Back in 2017, when we passed the operating levy, those started collecting in 18 and 19. You can see the revenue jump. But you can see the revenue dip now that we have state funding cuts going into 20 and 21, and then hopefully restoring back in 22 and beyond. This is just a pie graph of our revenue streams. Property tax makes up 59, 59% of our revenues. Unrestricted grants and aid that your state funding is at 17%, public utility tax at 6%. This says property tax allocation is the official name from ODE. That's actually your homestead rollback reimbursements from the state of Ohio. That's 7%. And then all other operating revenue that includes the finance, the joint financing district revenue, interest revenue, Medicaid revenue, paid participate fees, classroom fees, and all kinds of miscellaneous items as well. So property taxes, 59% of our revenue comes from property taxes. We're primarily a residential community at 83%. Looking at our total tax valuation, just over a billion dollars. We are finally exceeding 2019, which was when the Great Recession was occurring. So we're finally back to that point and finally exceeding a little bit. Increased valuation though only, only results in additional revenue on inside milletage. And if it's new construction on the substitute levy, all of our operating levies are continuous period of time. The 4.9 mill operating levy that was passed in May of 2017, started collecting 2018, and it's currently collecting at 4.56 mils. And we did, I did put in about a 1% decrease in collections through COVID-19, just based on historical data. We probably won't know much until July, what that really looks like. Is it gonna be less than that? And even if its collection is less, doesn't mean it won't be collected. This is more of a timing difference. Blink and see carry forward from year to year, and those can catch up at a later time. So this is kind of just the bar graph showing prior years, you know, when the operating levy passed back in 17, started to increase, then it levels off again going forward in the forecasting years. One of our current levies in place. Right now, we have inside knowledge of 4.8 mils. The cumulative levies to 1976 of 11.84 mils, the 1980 levy, the 1986 levy, 2009 substitute levy that was originally an emergency levy. And then the 2017 levy brings our total general fund milletage to 30.34 mils. We have a permanent improvement levy that goes into a separate fund that's not part of the forecast at 2.3 mils. And then the phase one construction project debt, originally at 1.92 mils, is now collecting at 1.55 mils. That's to pay the bond, bonded debt from our construction for a total milletage of 34.19 mils. That doesn't include the financing district. So compare some of the tax rates in Lake County. Riverside has the third lowest in Lake County. Wickliffe has the highest tax, school district tax rate at 63.78 mils. That was based on, they had recently passed a large bond issue that was around 13, or 11.47 mils, excuse me. And then Paintsville City's the next at 4.47.34 mils. Purple Harbors at 47.29 mils. They had a 4.4 mil levy or so on the ballot in the primary election. And that did not pass. Willby Eastlake's at 46.84 mils. Their levy did pass. It was a 4.94 mil levy. That's not included in this total. Kirtland's at 40.34 mils. Riverside's or Miners at 38.29 mils. With only Madison and Perry lower than us, Perry, you can't really count because of the power plant. They generate a lot of revenue there. So we're fairly close to Madison, and I hear they might be going on the ballot here in November. Unrestricted grants and aid, that's what includes our state funding formula, as we already talked about, the cuts of the 13.47%. So we're expecting 663,000 recouped in FY20 and 455,000 in FY21. For FY21, we're projecting an 18% cut in revenue. You know, we were cut 13.4 now. That was kind of a guess. We don't really know. Aaron Roush and Department of Education pretty much said, expect a cut of the same, if not more, percent this year. They probably use the same formula they used before. For some reason, ODE thinks it's a, a, a fair way of cutting funding, which, you know, when Aaron Roush said that at our meeting, treasure meeting with Lake and Jocka County, which were, most of the districts in those counties were hit pretty hard. We didn't think it was real equitable the way they did the cuts. So hopefully, they will consider other options when they do this year 2021. So an 18% cut is 1.5 million. If it changes dramatically from that, we'll have big forecasts and go from there. Casino revenue as well is normally $52 a student. 2020 is already collected. We're projecting $35 a student in fiscal year 21 because casinos are closed. And I, you know, I believe they're gonna be opening in the near future, but they're probably not gonna be opening at their normal capacities. So this is kind of what we were suggested to forecast going forward, but you know, that could change as well. At $52 a student, you're only talking a little more than 225,000 a year. So it's not, it's not a significant, I mean, it's obviously an important revenue stream, but it's not, you know, significant like our state funding or property tax funding. So this is more of a bar graph that kind of shows, you can see in 2021, it dips down. And then for 2022 and 2023, we're projecting at 95% of 2019. What that will look like when those times come, we won't know probably till June of 2021, what the next budget will look like. As of now, 95% of 2019 is what we're, what we decided to go with. Then there's property tax allocation. That's the homestead rollback reimbursements from the state. That's about 7% of our revenue. And I always just leave this in here, just the TPP phase out that's been reduced to zero. We used to get 3 million a year. That got phased to zero a couple of years ago. This is kind of a bar graph that showed how that was reduced back then, and now it's just pretty level going forward. The other revenue, 4.7 million, about 10% of our revenue. That includes the joint financing district. We just talked about that renewal. Paid participate fees, we're projecting at 141,000. That's lower this year because of spring sports being canceled. We're expecting around 200,000 starting fiscal year 2021, assuming things go back to somewhat normal. If things change, we'll obviously have to revise that. Open enrollment ends estimated 675,000. Classroom fees are down to 180,000. That was a little bit of a dip this year, I think, because of the economic situation and just the way things went out this year. We're kind of expecting that to return to a more normal level next year as people catch up on those. Medicaid reimbursements at 320,000. We're expecting a $280,000 cost from 2018 to come this year. If it comes a little bit later than June 30th, it'll be in the next fiscal year. Interest revenue, we're expecting 250,000 this year, decrease that to 150,000 next year because interest rates have been slashed dramatically. So Star Ohio is not earning what it used to. And so that's what we expected for next year and going forward. And includes other things such as kindergarten, kindergarten tuition doesn't apply anymore, but preschool needs, field trips, rentals, fines, manufactured homes, tax, things like that are also included in that, in that number. This kind of shows a graphical of it. You can see a little bit of an increase as we collect more from financing district in 2021 and 2022, and then it starts to drop down a little bit. Expenditures, salaries makes up 52% of our expenditures. Benefits about 22 for a total of 74% of our, of our expenses. That's pretty typical in, you know, in school districts. Purchase services is about 21%. We'll see that in a little bit. And then supplies and materials, about 1.4 million, is about 3% of our expenditures. There's no slide on that coming up, but for supplies, we didn't project an increase of 100,000 for next fiscal year based on early estimates and how we utilize the care's funding. Of, we know the guidelines, what, how much hand sanitizer, mask, all the stuff we need to provide, we're not really sure. As Dr. Kales mentioned earlier, with the ESC purchasing supplies through them, they have a calculator that Willby Eastlake went through the exercise to see what, what the true cost might be to go through an entire year based on some assumptions of how many squirts of hand sanitizer, are you providing masks, things like that. And, you know, Willby's like, you know, not quite twice our size, but they were, their calculator came out to about $2 million in protective equipment and sanitizer. That's all. That's not, that's natural, you know, in that I'm not sure what they use in their assumptions for that, but I mean, that's, that it can be expensive really, really quick. Just salaries, you know, includes our, you know, basically all salaries of certified, classified, you know. Also, you know, our union contracts with the teachers' union and OPSI, OPSI expires this year, and the teachers' contract expires next year. So the forecast, you know, reflects what we know at this time as far as what those salaries will be. Benefits makes up about 22% of our expenditures. Most, you know, Medicare, retirement, and workers' compensation is based on a percentage of salaries, but also includes medical insurance, dental, and vision. For medical insurance, we're expecting about 8% increase in the cost of medical dental vision, about 3%. We're a member of the Lake County Schools Council that helps, helps keep those costs lower than the industry averages. One thing that was, was good is the Lake County Schools Council announced a health insurance premium holiday back in March for the month of June. We had the option of picking June or July. We ended up picking June. So that's a savings of about 485,000. We do not, basically what that means is we don't have to pay the healthcare premiums for that month. There'll also be the deductions from our employee paychecks for their portions will be, will be removed. Will be reflected in their paychecks in June. So it'll be a little bit of a bump to the employees, you know, not having that deduction, but also a huge savings to the district because we don't have to pay those health insurance premium for that month. That really helped to keep yours benefits in line, but next year we'll go back to, to normal levels. Purchase services, about 47% of that is based on tuition-based costs. So that includes like your open enrollment out deduction. So students who live in our community that attend neighboring districts, community school deductions of 230,000. Be interesting to see how that plays out going forward. If, if we're in session as normal in the fall and, and somebody decides to go to an online community school, that will increase scholarships out and 160,000. And then other tuition really is 1.4 million. A lot of that's, these expenses are outside of our control. But this also includes many things such as special ed services, instructional services, utilities, postage, printing, security, tracked, tracked and transportation services, insurance coverage, also include substitute teachers, check it out through the ESC in Ohio. We saw some savings in some of those categories, reduced utilities, reduced substitute costs and things like that, depending on how the school year looks next year. You know, those could vary. Also, cash flow wise is the graphical depiction of that here. OD recommends that we have a 30 to 60-day cash balance. So that's reflected in this kind of a lime green line. It kind of shows how our cash flow varies each month. January and February is usually when we see our lowest cash flow. So we're still, you know, we have a good cash flow at this point, even with the budget cuts from the state of Ohio. That's, you know, good financial management is to stay, keep our cash above that line, just so we have a good rainy day fund for additional, you know, issues that may come about. So what could change? I always have this slide on our, our presentation. I did not have COVID-19 in November. But, you know, obviously, the state revenue cuts from the state of Ohio, what that really looks like. If it's, you know, we projected 18%. If it ends up being 10%, then that's pretty good. If it ends up being 20% or 25%, that's obvious. Property tax collections, you know, will collections be higher? Will collections be lower? You know, I imagine it could go lower possibly, depending on how this thing progresses. You know, I left it on here enrollment spikes because of the Fairway Pines development and the Encore Heisey Park development. Both fairly large developments happening in our community. Obviously, home construction is slowing down a little bit, but you know, it seems like those are still popping up in those developments. Or on the flip side, could have enrollment decreases due to online schools. Or, you know, we may have changes to open enrollment policies going forward. So we'll see how that, how that pans out on the revenue side. For expenditure side, you know, staffing levels, how that might change, healthcare plan changes, purchase services, the community schools. COVID-19 buys, how much more will that cost us for masks, gloves, sanitizer, cleaning supplies? Also looking at, you know, transfers to other funds from the general fund. So like nutritional services. If we aren't able to maintain in the black, what does that look like? You know, usually nutrition services has a very healthy cash balance going into next year. With anything going on, it's gone down a little bit. So we gotta monitor that. Athletics is another thing to consider. You know, what does the fall sports look like? You know, what if they say there's no spectators during football games this fall? I mean, that's a big generator for the athletic fund. If we're still playing football without the spectators, we're at the transfer probably funds to athletics to support the program. And then how we're gonna utilize the CARES Act funding, you know, is it gonna be used towards some of these COVID-19 supplies or towards purchase services for technology and things like that? So that takes me to the end of the slideshow. I just wanted to open up, see if there's any questions from the board at this time.
Gary, I just want to make sure that we, at the finance meeting, we, we talked about making sure that we put all the supplies, the expected COVID supplies back into the budget and taking the, the CARES money is kind of external. It's not even, it's not even in the budget because we don't really know exactly. I guess we know how much it's gonna be, but we're considering utilizing that for other purposes. Correct? So we put that money, the supplies, at least some portion.
Right. We did put some portion back into the forecast. Once we know more of what we're required to do this fall, we'll kind of adjust from there. So, you know, things could, you know, depending on how, how we can utilize it, the CARES funding is kept separate from the forecast because it's kind of for a separate fund. And we'll kind of monitor how we can use, utilize that and, you know, adjust from going forward.
Alright, thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you very much. That takes us to public participation. If I can get back to that, I lost it somehow. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves, and our comments are limited to three minutes. If there's anybody that wants to, they use a little hand function, I guess. No? Anybody next showing up? You're muted, Nick.
We did have a question earlier in the chat, which Dr. Kales did address, but
I saw that.
I figured I, we should, if we want to read it publicly, just in case people aren't reading the chat section.
Can you do that, please?
The question was from Kathy. It says, will the kids in Latchkey summer camp be required to wear masks? Dr. Kales's response is, my understanding that Latchkey staff will require to wear masks. I do not believe students are required. Stipulations have been approved by the Lake County General Health District.
Very good. Thank you. There is nothing else that will take us to the consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. The first thing we have is finance and audit.
Sure. We have a recommend, we have a agenda item to approve the items.
The items listed on the finance and audit consent agenda is recommended by the treasurer, items A through I. Have a second?
I'll second.
I just wanted to read the donations that we had a donation from Levon to the Riverside Athletic Fund in memory of Jim Haffa. We had a donation from Aero Fluid Products to Riverside Fast Pitch. And we had a donation from Greg Miller to the Riverside General Fund. He's probably giving back his lunch funds, lunch funds. So we'd like to thank those folks for doing that. Is there any other discussion on the finance items?
I was just going to ask on the Chromebook purchases, what grade are we, is this to replace for a grade this year? Or is this for the new, what is this for? Who gets the new ones this year?
I noticed we placed two grade levels, I'm just not sure which ones, I don't know if Melissa knew exactly what grades or.
I can't remember who gets the new ones this year either, and I don't have that stuff sitting in front of me. I'm sorry, it's just our regular rotation, I just don't know who it was.
I was just curious.
Yeah, we were able to do a joint purchase with Kirtland, saved us a few thousand dollars. And with our original quotes, we're on our own because we're buying larger quantity together.
Good stuff.
Yeah, if there's no other discussion, Gary, can you call the roll?
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
You're muted, Tom.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye, motion carried.
Personnel.
Hold on, I'm getting to that page, there's a lot here. Should we have a motion to approve the items listed on the personnel consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, items A through F? Have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Teacher contract renewals are on here, we have a lot of information on here, a couple of resignations for whom I'd like to thank those folks for their dedicated service to the district, they've been here a long time. Was there any other discussion on those items? If not, can you call the roll, Gary?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next item is item H, we have a resolution to approve, approve the employment of Chris Hastings, head coach for girls soccer pending fall sports for 2020. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lori, if there is any discussion on that? And if not, can we call the roll?
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Jane.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next up, we have item I, payment of supplemental contracts. We have a resolution regarding the payment of supplemental contracts for the extracurricular activities covered the period of March 13th, 2020, through the last day of the 2019, 2020 school contract year. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Is there any discussion on that? And if not, can we call the roll, please?
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Jane.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Lori, I'm going to ask that you read the next one, please.
So it's a resolution to approve employment of classified substitute for summer maintenance, Marco Grassi. Have a second?
I'll second.
Can you read the roll?
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Epstein.
Tom Heck.
Nate.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Motion carried. Takes us to curriculum programming.
Curriculum and programming, motion to approve the items listed in curriculum programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, A through C.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Just going to congratulate those graduates that are number Cs of Riverside Class of 2020, list of graduates. So congratulations to those kids.
I went and read all of them.
It's awesome.
Yep. Good job by all of them. Alright, could we do the roll, please, Gary?
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Motion carried, buildings and grounds.
Motion to approve item A listed on the buildings and grounds consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent. May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Miley, any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on this. Considering that this is going to be an expensive addition to the high school and that. Can somebody please address how this will be affected if we move forward in the future with a new high school? And how much of this will be usable or not usable?
Do you want me to speak to that, Jim, as much as I can?
I, I think what we, what we also ought to point out too is the fact that this is basically for preliminary design too. We're not, but I understand, I mean, we're not voting on the, on the hundreds of thousands of dollars that were picked to upgrade. I do know that there's some equipment that we can use in a newer building. Melissa can elaborate on that.
So just again, to reiterate what Jim said, this is just for the work that T D A has done in the design. I don't think the intention was ever to not bring the design to the board, there just isn't a design yet. I don't know if it'll be in a formal presentation or something that will be presented through a Friday packet. But before we would move forward and expend any of that money, I realize it has to come to the whole group. But at this point, there isn't anything to bring forward. We have to, we have to pay for the services and they're finishing up that design now. Because of the timing of our board meetings, this process is almost finished. Even though we are just, you guys are just now approving the expenditure of the money for the design. So we should have those documents probably, I would say, within the next week that we can review.
And that does, so this, this is, we're not going to be approving the actual project yet.
No, this, no, this is just to approve the work that T D A is doing to get us ready to do the project.
Right.
Now, I have, I've met with buildings and grounds and I have met with the curriculum committee and they know the basic idea of what we're trying to do. But other than that, we don't have, we don't have any formal plans or have not looked at any formal plans yet because they don't exist.
Yeah, in order to bring you a number of what it's going to cost, we had to get this design done.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, I just want to make sure that people, whatever we decide to do at any point in time in the future is that we, we are coordinating that with our facility plan. So that we're not spending, if we're going to just be replacing it, that's all. So that's all I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and, and the T D A contract includes the entire scope of the project. So go out to bid and then decide that we don't want to move forward with the project. We won't be paying the entire contract, we'll pay through what part of the design phase we went through. The, the proposal from T D A includes, including like the construction oversight and closeout and all that stuff as well. We would just be using the design portion of that proposal. This originally started as a grant application that we were applying for workforce grants from the state of Ohio. That got pulled as well with the state funding cuts. And then obviously we made the decision to continue to move forward, to bid it out. And, you know, some of the holding equipment that would be part of this lab could be reused. Facility, obviously, building upgrades for electrical and things like that, obviously would not be usable in the new building. It'd just be, you know, be what it is. But, you know, obviously it's a good program for our students that we should continue to move forward with. And then, you know, we'll see how the funding, if there's any other funding opportunities going forward. But we are planning, if we do move forward, to use the permanent improvement, which we now have a little bit of a balance in to be able to do a project.
So then this project, this project is not, like, students aren't going to be able to be doing part of this. I know because it's a consortium of four districts. Are they going to be able to participate in this program in the fall or no? This is not like a fall thing?
No, there's, it originally was, was going to be that. I have to say that my friends at T D A were really super happy and maybe the only ones when the, the COVID-19 crisis hit because it put the brakes on me. And the fact that they could, we couldn't move quite as fast, this is in no way, shape or form going to be ready to go in the fall. So we have to have a discussion about whether or not we'll do, if we decide to move forward with the renovations, if we'll do them in the fall or if we'll start them in January. So that's the next piece.
Are the other districts ready to move forward?
You know what, we honestly, Belinda, we haven't had a chance to circle back around and revisit, revisit some of this. It just hasn't, everybody's been scrambling. So I was just thinking about that though, and, and I have a couple of meetings for other things with several of those administrators. So I will be circling around to see if we can offer it. I have already put that word out to a couple of them.
Okay.
Melissa, while, while we're talking about this, and I'm not sure if anyone's watching the, the meeting or will watch it later, explain what this means. I mean, we're spending, you know, maybe $30,000 on design on a project that may cost a couple hundred thousand dollars. We're not sure yet because we have to finish the design. But it doesn't only mean that we have access to a welding program on our campus. It opens up a lot of other opportunity because of an agreement we have with other districts. So even though we're spending this money on the welding, our students are getting, can get other opportunities elsewhere not in welding, correct?
Yes, that's how, that's how the whole consortium idea started with each one of the member districts bringing forward a program. So Perry has a construction program, Wickliffe was looking at starting an E M T program and Paintsville City already has an HVAC program started. And this is trying to feed into some of what we've talked about in the past couple of years about increasing opportunities for our students that are outside of, of college focus. So looking at a little bit more of career readiness, the, the program itself. Whereas right now, kind of what we run is an introductory welding program. So kids can take welding one or two and they get a little bit of a taste of, of what it means to weld and some of the, the basic principles. But then they go to Auburn if they want to really further their opportunities. We are not a program that's going to compete with Auburn however, because we will be focused strictly on seniors. And that's what all of these programs are looking to do, is to focus on senior credentialing. Which means seniors will get credentials and be employable and have skills when they graduate.
My, my point, my point with this obviously is the fact that it goes beyond, the opportunity goes beyond just welding.
Yes.
And I would say, just as part of the discussion, I mean, that was part of the, in previous conversations between the board and the administration that the board was hoping to define other opportunities for, for students who are not on the, the college bound track to, to have additional options. And so this is right in line with that and, and coupled with our association with the other three programs that Dr. Malacher mentioned. I, I do think it's truly an opportunity for, for us to expand the scope and options and, and it's, it ultimately is a very positive enhancement to what we are able to offer here at, at the high school. So, any, any other discussion?
No, thank you for the clarifications.
One thing I wanted to add just for you, Melissa, to think about is last week in the news, the Greater Cleveland Welding Union is putting together a program to hire high school graduates, train them and guarantee jobs. It might be something we might want to look at too, is seeing if they can help us out with any of this as we move forward too.
And, and thank you, Jack, for sharing that. I, I will look into see if there's any kind of partnerships available.
Okay.
Alright, any other discussion? Alright, can you call the roll, please?
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grass.
Aye.
Motion carried. And that takes us into the Board of Education update, if anyone has got anything?
Alright, just like to congratulate our graduates.
Woo!
Right?
Yeah.
We'll see them on June 13th and 14th. That's exciting that we at least are able to still do something to see them personally, so that'd be great.
And hope good weather.
Yeah, there's that. Alright, if there is nothing else, I'm going to make a motion at 8:47 PM to adjourn to executive session for matters of purchase or sale of property, if I could have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Heck, if there's no discussion, let's call the roll, please.
Lori Korniski.
Aye.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye.
Linda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Alright, and don't forget, board members, there is a Jack, there is a different link for the executive session to make sure you go in.
Are we coming back?